Hello, this is Dylan Moore with I Rita TV coming to you today. It is Thursday, February 17th, 2022, and I hope you're ready for a spectacular conversation that's gonna happen today because I have exciting news and activity about Washington State and how the people here, particularly parents, are learning how to take their government back. And I have Aaron in studio with Washington Parents Alliance, representing Washington Parents Alliance, WAPA, here to tell me what's been going on, among other things, what's been going on with school boards across the entire state that has everybody so excited. So first of all, Aaron, thanks for coming back into the studio.
Yeah, I'm so glad to be back here.
Yeah, so last year in here, we didn't have it on recording, but we talked about some stuff that needed to be kept quiet at the time. We kept it behind the scenes at the time because mostly it was to keep it off the state's radar.
Right.
And it's my understanding that you're now past that phase and it's time to let the public know what happened and what's been going on. So tell me, what's been going on?
We are so excited. We, uh, we have done something that I think has never been done before in, in, uh, modern, you know, modern history when, uh, since, since the internet. Uh, we created an alliance of parents across the state to do something called invoking administrative remedy. So we did not do a class action lawsuit. We just started using paperwork to inform school boards of the laws that the schools were violating with these mask mandates and the vaccination mandates for their teachers and any even future talk of a vaccine mandate for kids. Right? So we, we used something called a public disclosure request. Everybody in Washington is familiar with this by now because everybody's talking about FOIA laws, Freedom of Information.
It's the state's version of FOIA, basically, right?
Yeah, it's the RCW on public disclosure, same thing. Um, but we did something kind of tricky. We used a public disclosure request written by a lawyer, Louis Ewing, to serve the law. So we used it for a manner in which most of the time it's not used. We asked the state, we, we put a list of 10 different federal and state laws that were being violated and we asked them, uh, to each, each board member, we served them to the board member rather than giving them to the records office of the district office. And we said, here are some laws. Would you please provide us with documentation of any, you know, written regulations or laws that supersede these? Which is a sort of cheeky way of saying, we're using this PDR request to inform you of the law that you are now violating, that you need to now understand you're liable for. Now, what this does is in effect, because we, we served these to every board member through certified return receipt mail. So they had to sign it. So we have a signature for every one of them.
Evidence that they've been served.
Evidence that they've been served. So because the sheriffs weren't doing their job, we had to do it for them. So now we have evidence that they've been served, they've been informed of the law, they cannot claim that they have qualified immunity if ever, um, civilly sued. Because they've, we've, we can prove that times thousands of parents, they have been shown the law.
And then real quick, because we've talked about this in, in last time you were here, but could we really briefly touch on what the law is that's being broken if this is the first time that somebody's heard this?
Well, I mean, there's so many. I mean, this could, that would be another.
Let's just take one.
Yeah.
For example, informed consent.
How about, well, informed consent, yes. That's, that's the big one that's being, um, broken in the, with the employers and with the schools. Anywhere where they're asking for mask and vaccine mandates, that's been, you know, egregiously, egregiously violated. But the schools, if they're the ones mandating that the teachers get vaccines, did they have a doctor talk to these, uh, teachers about the risks and the benefits of alternative measures to preventing COVID? No, they did not. Did they give them all the information on the ingredients? No, they did not. In fact, there's no insert in the vaccine. And, um, were they MDs who mandated this?
With a license?
With licenses?
Yeah.
No, they were not. And most importantly, did they get consent without coercion? No, they did not. They said they would lose their jobs. So they violate it every which way from Sunday. Uh, one that's that we could talk about is public accommodation. Any building that the public is going to be able to come into needs to provide an accommodation for anybody who has a disability. Right? Did they do that for anybody who needed an exemption from the mask?
No.
No. The schools are also in violation of the 2000 Amendment Act of the American Disabilities Act. So this is something we just, just came up with.
You just stumbled upon.
We just stumbled upon it. Actually, I'll tell you who told me about this. Mark Thiel, who's running for governor in Oregon. He is the superintendent of Elsia School District down there and he kept his district open this whole time. And when I told him, Mark, I have 10,000 parents organized by district. What do you want me to do with that? And he said, tell them all to request a 504 accommodation for their kids. A 504, section 504 is, um, also it's based on the amendment, 20, 2008 amendment. Actually, let me take that back. Section 504 is from the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. But the 2008 Amendment Act of the American Disabilities Association Act, so they call it the AD AAA, right? This was, I believe, signed by Obama. It opened up the parameters that you needed to claim that you have a disability. And it made it so that it was easier to get disability, um, assistance and support.
Yeah, accommodation.
Accommodation, exactly. And it specifically says, you do not need a medical diagnosis or a note from a doctor to claim this at the level of the school. So he was, he was like on his way to a press conference and I was trying to watch my son in a basketball game. So he just told me this at the end of a conversation. He's like, Aaron, look into this. And I go, well, why, why could we try this? He says, because the schools do not need to require a medical, uh, medical note from the doctor for this.
Or they're not allowed to require.
They're not allowed to require it. And so what we just figured out is for all the parents who went and asked for a medical exemption for the, for the mask, for their kids, they did the same thing that businesses did to employees asking for religious exemption this, earlier in this year. They implied that they had the authority to ask for, right? You gotta go to, you gotta get a note from your pastor. You gotta prove that you go to church. You gotta prove that you actually are religious to get a religious exemption. All of that is BS.
It's all illegal for them to say that.
It's all illegal for them to say that. Well, they were, the schools were coached to do the same thing. Tell the, the students or tell the parents that they need to get doctors notes. No, they don't. So I found in the OSPI section 504 manual that you do not need to do that. So, uh, that was Mark Thielman's advice. He said, tell all those parents out there to go and get, ask for a 504 request. Now, uh, if it's granted, there's some risks to this. Okay. If it's granted, uh, then you need to deal with the fact that you have just labeled your child as disabled.
Yeah.
Yeah. But here's what's covered, anxiety. And what's also covered is.
And it's not a lie.
It's not a lie.
I, I have anxiety from this. Yeah.
Exactly, exactly. And you know what's covered? It's right in the section 504 handbook of every school district.
Yeah.
It says, if you're having difficulty breathing, thinking, learning, um, and you're having anxiety, I pulled the words right out of the handbook.
Yeah.
Right?
Not making up any of those.
And you can also claim a temporary disability brought on by long-term mask wearing. Right? So, you know, you can, for parents who want to do this, I would say just jump on the 504 handbook with OSPI and write an email to your superintendent and your principal and ask for it to be forwarded to the 504 coordinator. Get some help from any other parent who's had to deal with, um, special ed or children with disabilities and say, how do I do this? And ask for a 504 accommodation for wearing a mask. Now, they have like 45 days to get back to you on this. So I don't expect for them to turn around and give you an accommodation. This is just to put more pressure on the schools. Because if they violate it, then we've got a bunch of lawyers who can jump on it and sue them for, um, violating the ADA.
Thanks for helping everybody navigate that labyrinth.
Yeah.
A little bit of a sidetrack, but I'm totally glad that you said that.
Yeah, I forgot. That was something we needed to do.
I had no idea. So to, um, kind of jump back into a sky view on it. So basically, all these COVID rules are nothing more than a big marketing campaign.
Right. And they're all threats.
And they go against the actual law.
Absolutely.
And then in terms of the liability, because all the, all the big shots have figured out a way to be like, well, I didn't actually tell you you had to do it. It was just a recommendation. It was actually just a recommendation. I'm not liable. It's emergency use authorization. So we're not liable. We're not liable. The liability cascades down to the person coercing you or the organization coercing you to do this. So you're saying, you're letting the school board members know that.
They're so liable.
You are the ones liable for breaking these laws and what you're saying are laws, they're not laws in the least little bit. And you're saying.
Well, I had this.
And that's what the, the public request is, is show me, that's the trick, right? Show me the laws that supersede these ones that you appear to be breaking.
Right. And did you know that you were breaking all these laws, like public accommodation laws? Uh, you know, I mean, there's just, there's so, there's so many. And so that we used one public, public disclosure request to serve the law. And it was really cheeky how their, their records request department would come back and say, by the way, did you know that you're not supposed to send these directly to the homes of the school board members? And we're like, oh, sorry, our mistake. Yes, we knew that.
Yeah.
But had we sent it directly to the records request office, the school board members would have never seen it. So, um, what we did is our goal was to get between 20 and 50 parents per school district to serve these public disclosure requests.
In the entire state, right?
Well, we wanted per district and as many districts as we could.
Okay.
And we started out in October and there's 295 school districts. And I thought, man, I'd be lucky if we could get 20, you know, if I, I'm, uh, I'm not organizing this, someone else is. The organizers, the, the team of volunteers, the parents who decided to do this, right? If we could just get a few, um, a few, like, what's a good showing to show the state?
You thought 20?
I thought 20. Yeah. Yeah. We've got 60, you know, as of today and growing. It just keeps growing. Yeah. It just keeps growing. Yeah. And that's only been in a few months. So we started this the end of October. It's early February right now. This has spread like wildfire. So what happened is far more than 20 parents. We've got some districts that are super tiny that got on board right away with some, some parents. It's just, it was like five grandparents who got together and said, let's do this. And then within a couple of weeks, it ballooned to 25, 50 people. We've got some districts with over 150 people who have served. And when I say serve, I mean, we don't have jurisdiction. We're not sheriffs. We've presented. We've presented the law in the form of a public disclosure request. We've done everything we can to use any legal option we have to get the law into the hands of the people who are breaking it. Right? So then there was a second public disclosure request that was asking for everything you could possibly want to know about the vaccines and about COVID. Okay. Please show us all the data that you used to decide to put our kids into lockdown. Everything that you would think you would naturally want to create a, you know, to create a state of emergency. So, uh, show us all the isolation tests, all the COVID-19 isolation tests. Please provide for us a list of all the ingredients in all the vaccines from every manufacturer, right? Please give us data to prove that these, all the safety data, please provide that with us. Please provide for us all of the data that you used to decide that masks were effective against the spread of the virus.
And which masks?
And which masks, right? Uh, please provide for us your medical license and your license to practice law, you know? I, I mean, the list goes on. It was 35 pages of public disclosure requests. It was exhaustive. And we even went and asked for, please provide for us a certified copy of the governor's, um, emergency proclamation with the governor's seal on it.
Can't find that either?
Can't find that either. And that's the one they keep asking about. We've even had records request officers go, um, what is a certified copy? Can you explain that? Well, you know, notarized, real.
The thing that your job is supposed to be to understand what I'm talking about, that sort of thing.
It's amazing that the, the things that have come back to us, the, the, what is an isolation test? You know, so it's, it's been pretty amazing.
There used to be a website, I don't know if it's still there, called Let Me Google That For You. You, you, you ever, you've ever seen that? So, uh, basically you type it in the web, uh, the Google search in the website that, uh, the person is, is asking about and you send them the link and then Google pops up and, and the computer moves the mouse over and types it in for you. There's this thing called the internet.
I, I know. I mean, it's like, why did you, why did you bother writing that back? Why didn't you just Google? What is, what is a certified copy? What does that mean?
And then of course, don't Google anymore. This is back in the day when Google actually showed you stuff.
Right.
But, um, anyway.
So, so we have 61, as of today, it could be more tomorrow. As of today, we have 61 districts participating. As of this point right now, I believe we're at around 40 school districts in the state of Washington have amassed a group of parents to all put their names on these legal documents. So essentially, this is why it's a little bit difficult to explain because this wasn't a class action lawsuit. It's not like a parent signed their name and information and paid a $5,000 or a $20,000 retainer to a law firm and then just watched the legal team take care of it. No. They are being, um, representing themselves pro se. So every one of them got a copy of these public disclosure rests.
They're individual, they're not suits yet, but they're.
They're not suits. No, they're, they're.
The potential for suits, right?
There's a potential. Yeah. This is, this is what you would do if you're gathering discovery, if you were a paralegal gathering discovery for a legal suit. You would want all the information from the other side that you would need to prove wrongdoing, right? So every one of these parents downloaded these copies of this, put their name at the top, signed them, 35 pages. And then together we all wrote a cover letter that we'll get into later, but it gave an entire strategy for these school boards to get out from under the centralized authority of the state departments that kind of had.
That's the exciting part of this conversation today.
Right, right. They had, they had their necks in a noose and we're like, do you guys understand that you're basically figureheads at this point? You know, we, we have all these mad mobs of parents yelling at you to go change things and we kind of understand you don't even have the power. Do you understand you don't even have the power by law? It's been taken from you. So we outlined that in the cover letter. And then this is important, Dylan, very calmly, no yelling. We went up to the microphone and we divided the lever, letter into four or five, uh, parents and we each took a section and we read it. And this was the diplomacy part. We started off the letter by saying, you know, you have a hard job. Never before in history has it been so hard. We're here to, we're here to work with you. And secondly, please use these public disclosure requests to get informed, but to inform us, let's work together. Let's get educated because there's a lot that we don't know about this scamdemic, right? So let's, let's, how about we work on the same team? Because our goal was to get these school boards to align with us and then point this all in the direction of the state.
Right. And I think it's an important point because these school board members, maybe some of them are crazy Marxists, but some of them are good people and they want to do the right thing.
A lot of them are.
But like you said, there's a noose around their neck.
Right.
Right? Follow these COVID rules.
Or you lose your funding.
And the school shuts down.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so we did something important. We, we laid it all out for them and said, I think that we've lost sight of how we originally created our republic, right? It's no longer a republic. We wanted our local school boards to have authority. Uh, you don't have it anymore.
Independent authority.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. We've, we've, there's, we had, don't realize that we've signed so much authority away to these centralized state agencies. And most of these school board members don't even really understand the role of the Washington State School Directors Association or the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction. So we'll get into that. But you know, the basic structure of a state's public school system should have a board of education. But we have so many other agencies with their fingers in the pie now.
Regional government.
Right, right. And so there was a lot that we felt we could educate the board members on. And in so doing, we educated all of ourselves. And so they can't accuse us of, you know, being complacent anymore because we've gotten very, very involved. So as of right now, um, it, this just, this ballooned into becoming something far more than what we ever envisioned it to be. It wasn't just, let's carry out one legal action. It's turned into a movement of, a movement of parents saying, I want to get informed. I want to get involved. And, and, and most importantly, I'm not here to be angry because being angry and jumping up and down and calling everybody communists and whatnot, it just really didn't work.
It doesn't do anything.
Yeah.
It doesn't do anything.
It didn't get anywhere.
And in fact, it's, uh, it's hurting us because that's giving the FBI or the, or the, whatever, the fodder they need to officially classify, uh, every parent in the United States as a domestic terrorist.
And it is very dangerous that the FBI did this. So we specifically said in our cover letter, uh, there have been over, I think over by now, over 20 states who have said, we want to pull out of the National School Board Association because why? Because they worked with Biden to try to turn domestic terrorism measures against parents. Now, if we let these policies, you know, get enacted into law, this is, uh, this is dangerous. This is a slippery slope.
Insane.
It's insane.
It's just absolutely insane.
But Washington was quiet on the matter. They did not. Yeah, they did not.
Yes.
They did not condemn what the National School Board had done. So we brought light to that and, and we said, so since we now have to tiptoe around the idea of coming to a school board meeting. So we said that right in the beginning of our cover letter, we said, we want you to see this as a demonstration of support. We're here to support you because essentially we elected you. This is the metaphor I use for my parents. I go, you know, are any of you business owners? Have you, have any of you ever given a job to an employee? And you look at them sort of floundering, trying to do the job and you realized, hey, it's my responsibility. I gave them a job this over their head. I didn't train them enough. Okay. Well, that's on us. So I know a lot of newly elected school board members who are in over their head right now.
Don't know.
They have no idea.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of school board members who don't knew, don't know Robert's Rules of Order. It'd be really great if they learned, right? Because that's a lot of power in their fingertips that they didn't know they had. A lot of them who had no clue that they were by law going to need to do governance training with WASDA. What's WASDA? What's governance training? There's so much they don't know. So I challenged all my parents in this group. I said, listen, we need to get smarter than the school board members because we elected them. They work for us. But we have, we've been clueless.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got to help them out. So that was sort of the tone of the cover letter is let's help each other get you out from under this, this noose that WASDA has over you and that OSPI has over you. Let's work together. And I have to tell you that over the course of about 60 days, all these different districts were served and they read the cover letter. We softened the presentation by coming at them, to coming to them with this presentation of bridge building, right? And diplomatically telling them, you've been castrated, but you know, not using those words, you know, you, you don't have the authority you think you do.
Let us help you.
Let us help you get it back. You know, we want you to represent us. So let us help you get your authority back. And we had school board members thank us, thank us for what we had done. We had school board, school boards let parents take their public comment time to pray over the board. We had tears. We had standing ovations. I mean, it was, I, I think I would never want to be a school board member right now. I think it would be a really tough job because you would feel powerless and you'd feel like you're constantly in a tug of war. So hats off to all of those school board members out there who decided to do it. Yeah.
We should talk about WASDA, but before we do, I think there was an article.
Oh, yes.
Talk about.
Yes, 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 yes.
Keith, can you pull that article up?
Okay. So here's, here's one of the purposes of WAS, uh, WAPA, Washington Parents Alliance, is to make sure that this never happens. So, uh, Keith, do you have it up?
Yeah, he's got it up.
Okay, perfect. So Joe Matthews is the author of this column that just came out. Let's see, when was it? January 13th? You're gonna read it. Yeah, you're gonna think it's satire, but it's actually not. Apparently this guy is fairly well read. And it says Californians should abolish parenthood in the name of equity. Now, the reason why I wanted you guys to read this is because it is indicative of some data that's being shopped around Washington legislature right now. So it says, if California is ever going to achieve true equity, remember there's a very big difference between equity and equality, the state must require parents to give away their kids. Today's Californians often hold up equity, the goal of a just society completely free from bias. As our greatest value, Governor Gavin Newsom makes decisions through an equity lens. Institutions from dance ensembles to tech companies have publicly pledged themselves to equity, but their promises are no match for the power of parents.
Those darn parents. What do we do about them?
Saying is, parents have more power than all these policies. Parents should, okay, then he goes on to say, he, he says, fathers and mothers with greater wealth and education are more likely to transfer these advantages to their children, as if that's a really bad thing.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep, that's horrible.
You know, as a result, children of less advantaged parents will face an uphill struggle. So you can scroll up a little bit, Keith. This is, okay, he says, my solution, make raising your own children illegal.
Great idea. Spectacular idea.
While we wait for the legislation to pass, we can act now. The rich and poor should trade kids. And homeowners might swap children with their homeless neighbors. Do you think this guy maybe was nauseous when he wrote this?
I, I think he had an erection while he was writing this.
Was he a dad? I want to know if he's a dad. Would he willingly give his children to the neighbors?
I don't know what's going through these people's heads.
Uh, then he gets to talk about Plato and I don't want to go into that because that's going to get you all excited because you're going to want to talk about Plato, but let's keep scrolling down.
I actually want to talk about Prussia, but we'll.
Oh, I know. I see. I texted you that today. Prussia.
Oh, I, I didn't even read it yet. I, I know about Prussia before you texted me anything.
See, we're on the same page, Dylan. We're on the same page. Uh, okay. This is great, Keith, what you've got right there. Today, a policy of universal orphanhood aligns with powerful social trends that point to less interest in family. Californians are slower to marry and are having fewer children. Our birth rate is an all-time low. Okay. I want to, I want to ask you something. Which way do they want it? These globalists? They want us to depopulate. Okay? Yet now they're complaining that we're not having kids fast enough.
People, so we got to solve the problem for you. I don't know why there's not enough people. I mean.
This is, this is ridiculous.
There's a propaganda campaign not to have people? I have no idea what you're talking about. Yeah.
This is just ridiculous. It's like, they're trying to take whatever data they have and push whatever agenda they have, even if those two agendas are contradictory.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So they want us to depop, they want us to reduce the population, but now they're saying, we're at fault for having children later in life. Now, I would say that's smart because in this economy, it takes two parents working to keep, to keep anything going, right? So a lot of parents are electing to have children a little later in life through conscious choices. Not because they're disinterested in being parents, but because they're interested in being parents with an economical foundation to handle it.
That the economics is, is dealt that way specifically, but again, that's another conversation.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, oh, they even bring Trump into this. It's fantastic. So anyway, uh, my proposal should be politically unifying. Um, let's keep going. He talks about, well, it just gets more and more sickening.
Here's, uh, we, we.
Foster care for all.
Oh, yeah.
Foster care for all.
Anyway, the, we talked about it beforehand and the argument that he makes, we don't have to read the whole thing here, is that because parents are so checked out.
Right.
Well, then they're not, they're not getting the job done anymore. So take them out of the equation.
Right. Well, and they're, so, so how does, how does this apply to Washington right now? You guys think this is crazy. You think this is farcical. There's no way this will happen.
And we'll have, we'll have the link to this below, you know, in the, in the show notes. Go ahead and read this because it's, man, there's a straight line from, from Plato to Prussia to, uh, George Orwell to right now. You'll see it right here. Oh, yeah.
Through that. And if anybody has ever studied how, uh, you know, like Pol Pot, how a communist takeover occurred in a country, the first thing they did was pull children away from their parents.
I, I am going to talk about Prussia. Okay.
Okay, real quick.
Real quick. The current educational system, oh, I'm up on the screen. Can you take me off? It's bugging me. The current educational system that we have originates from Prussia. I'm sure, I'm sure you've figured that out. Prussia was kind of sort of Germany, kind of sort of not Germany. And it, you know, comes from a bunch of independent kingdoms. Uh, it was a very militaristic kingdom. And they lost the war with Napoleon or battle with Napoleon in, I believe, 1806 or 1808.
Okay.
The Battle of Jena. And, uh, they were shocked because they said, we have a professional military and we just got our butts whipped by a bunch of French amateurs. Right? What do we do about this? A man by the name of Johann Fichte, who was the head of the University of Berlin, wrote, wrote an open letter to the King of Prussia, basically making the argument of this. The reason we lost this war is because our soldiers are too capable of critical thinking. We need to create an educational system where we can teach people how to follow orders, but they're too dumb to critically think about it. And the way that we're going to do this is through compulsory education where we take the children from the parents so they do not get the parents influence. That's because that's how the tradition passes along. How did that get to the United States? Originally, in order to get a PhD, the only place to get it was in Prussia. PhDs are a Prussian thing. The whole university system that we have today comes from Prussia. Horace Mann was the first American to get a PhD from Prussia.
Okay.
In 1850 or somewhere around there. And he later became the governor of Massachusetts. Massachusetts was the first state in the country to implement the public compulsory educational system.
And weren't they the only ones to have a mandate, a vaccine mandate for grownups?
I, I, I don't, I don't know about that one.
Yeah.
But the, the point that I wanted to make here was that you said that the, the, the idea is for communists to, to pull the children immediately away from the, from the parents. The public educational system that we have right now, the fundamental basis of it is just that.
Well, how many times have you had teachers say, we're not teaching our kids to critically think? You know, that's, that's been a buzzword the last 10 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So.
So we got derailed. I apologize.
Well, no, no, that's, there's a lot, there's a lot of rabbit holes we can go down and read the link I texted you this morning because it's, it's, it's another rabbit hole you can go down with regard to Prussia. It's amazing.
And then if you would like to go down a rabbit hole to Prussia, you need to check out the ultimate history lesson. You can find it on YouTube or if it hasn't been kicked off yet. Don't Google it. Duck, duck, go it. The ultimate history lesson, A Weekend with John Taylor Gatto, you won't come back with it, come back from it the same, but.
Okay.
Talk about that later.
Okay. This is fun. There's so many rabbit holes.
Yeah.
Okay. So the reason why we showed you that. Okay, so the reason why we showed you that article is because there are some, shall we call them lobbyists, or shall we call them the states, right? Shopping around data that they're calling a study of Washington parents saying, listen, for the last couple decades, they've been too checked out of taking care of their kids. They don't show up to school board meetings. They're, they're uninterested in the curriculum. And we're having kids later in life. They gave all these reasons for, for why we should be deemed inept as parents. And they're using that data to try to convince legislators to vote for more legislation to increase the state's hold over children.
And, and reduce the parents' hold.
Reduce the parents' hold, absolutely. And we're going to get into this and it's going to be shocking. You're going to realize it's already been done for the most part. But what they're trying to also do is, is expand the age that we can get their hold over our kids. So right now, you know, kids go into the public school system at the age of five, kindergarten. Well, they want to change that. So the school system includes preschool. So preschool isn't a private thing that you take over or that you sign up for anymore. It's not done by your community, you know, your community rec centers and places like that. No, this is something that wants, they want to be included in the public school system so that they can dictate how children are reared from age three and up. And moms, if you're listening, what they eventually want us to become is just chattel. We are, we are just there to make the babies. And men, you're just sperm donors.
To be soldiers or workers.
Right. And you get the hard work of paying for what it takes to raise the kids to the age of three, feed them, you know, put them to bed at night, but during the day, their brains, their minds, their hearts and their souls, those belong to the state.
Yep.
I mean, we need to be careful. So.
So how is, so let's talk about the nitty gritty of how this is being done in Washington State.
Absolutely.
And how we fix that.
Okay, so this is some of the information that we touched on in what we call the magical cover letter of these public disclosure requests that we served.
And, and this is the cover letter that's being, that is being read and has been read to the school board, school boards at school board meetings.
And sent to every school board member in their home and at the school district. And they got, they got anywhere from 20 to 150 copies. So there's no way.
And they're like 35 pages each.
And they're 35 pages each. So they can't say they didn't get a copy to read. It should be on every living room table of every school board member by now. So, you know, the first thing we could talk about is, Keith, you could bring this up. And what we want to do is like a little tutorial here for our citizens who are watching to understand that reading Washington law is actually quite easy. So the RCW that stands for, what does that stand for?
Revised Code of Washington. This is, this is the law of Washington, RCW.
And this website that has a little green bar across it, if you've landed on that website, you're kind of like in the library of law for Washington.
This, this is the state legislature's website. This is the source.
This is the source for all of it. Yeah. So it's, you're not going to get interpretation here. You're just going to get the law as it's written. Okay, so 28A, let's call that the chapter heading. That is where, it's called Common School Provisions. And this is where our entire school system is birthed, right here. So Keith is going to scroll down and we're going to go to 28A300. This is where the Superintendent of Public Instruction, the office is called the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and we refer to it affectionately as OSPI.
Right. And then there's an important point I want to make on that too, which is the off, this position, the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, is a statewide executive position that is elected similarly to the governor.
And they're trying to make it appointed. They're trying to make the superintendent, who, let's say his name, Chris Reichdell, or you like to refer to him as.
Chris Rectum. Please, everybody start referring to this guy as Chris Rectum because he's the guy who has been pushing the sex ed stuff. And when I see his name, I don't really know how to say it anyway, so he's Chris Rectum to me.
He's not just pushing sex ed, he's pushing expanded sex ed. We've read the curriculum.
That's what I meant.
It includes teaching five-year-olds about anal sex. So that's why you like to.
Chris Rectum, there we go. Yeah.
So if you scroll down a little bit to 28A345, you'll see where this other department was created called the Washington State School Directors Association, affectionately referred to as WASDA. These are the two state agencies that I would call the mob bosses of our school boards.
So we are OSPI and WASDA.
Yeah, so I'm going to refer to them as OSPI and WASDA from here on out. I would say these agencies have become, I don't want to say superfluous. I'm sure they're good for something, right? OSPI is sort of like payroll. They're the ones who are tasked with allocating state funds to the school boards. Okay, and then WASDA is tasked with creating recommended policies and trainings for our school boards. And I think in theory, it sounds like they are needed and necessary and essential workers, right? But for some reason, not for some reason, over the last 20 years, ever, ever since Kennedy was shot, I like to use that as a, as a timeframe, a starting point, yeah. We have, they have, under our noses, written more and more RCWs in wax that give them more power over the school boards than we want them to have.
And they haven't used it really until now, right? Well, and the point I wanted to make was, they write it in and then they leave it for a while.
Right. And we don't even know what happened.
So no one knows this happens, and then when they act on it, they go, oh, this has been a law for 10 years.
Exactly, exactly. So let me give you an example. WASDA created Common Core math, or they, they were the ones who pushed it, right? Some school districts, especially out on the east side, decided they didn't want to have anything to do with it. And they weren't punished. They weren't penalized. They didn't have their funds taken away for not using Common Core. Okay, so WASDA then creates this new CRT training. We're going to get into that later. And what if schools decide they don't want to do CRT curriculums with their, with their kids? They don't want to train teachers that way. Are they going to be punished? Well, let's look at what was done to us during the pandemic. Chris Reichdell, we're going to go up to OSPI now. Yep, Chris Rectum. He sent out a letter to all the school boards on August 25th saying, if you don't follow COVID masking policies and social distancing policies and make all the kids, you know, putting alcohol-based hand sanitizer on their hands five times a day, blah, 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 we will withhold your funding, your state funding, clearly in violation of the McLeary decision and Article 9 of the Washington Constitution that says our schools shall be fully funded. So Chris Reichdell is assuming he has the ability to decide who's naughty and who's nice and who gets their funding.
I wish someone would have said, okay, let's see you do it. Well, maybe we'll get that, right?
Well, and that's what happened. You know, there's rumor that Eatonville attempted to or tried, and they were sent a threatening letter. Again, could have been an empty threat. I don't know. But so then they went and got back in compliance. But the, the point is, is that, is that extortion? Is that misappropriation of public funds for Chris Reichdell to use? Chris Rectum, excuse me, to use our state taxes that are meant to fund public schools and pay teacher salaries and buy computers for kids? Is that okay? Is that lawful for him to withhold it, to leverage it?
Well, I think he just pretty plain, pretty plainly pointed out in the Constitution. No.
No, it's not. It's not. Yeah. So, but here's the question. This is what I've been saying to all my parents. I've been like, if he could withhold the funds over this, he created a precedent for how to leverage against all these school boards. And in, it's very important that people understand that since the McLeary decision, which we can get into later, Washington is almost 80 to 90%, now, you can fact-check me on this, but I've asked some school board members to clarify for this, clarify this for me, almost 80 to 90% dependent on state funding. It's not that way in other states. So we couldn't even run a bare bones operation on the money we get from the local levies. We absolutely, that's another way to centralize authority away from the local level, is make sure they're the ones who control the purse strings for the amount of money that you need to even just open your doors.
We just need to control your money. Yeah.
That is, you've just summarized the entire scamdemic right there. Who cares about the law? It's all about who's got the money.
Yep.
And you know, in Oregon, it was actually easier for them to stand up and not comply had they tried, which is how Mark Thielman was able to do it, because they, they didn't have their state funding threatened. The only thing they had fund or threatened was the CARES Act money, the federal money.
Oh, and they're like, well, if we don't need it, then.
Yeah, we can get by without it. So that's how it was easier for Mark to keep a school open. Well, here we had more threatened. So, and it's something that Louis, our lawyer, is wondering is, did they take those federal funds and the state funds and intermingle them at the, at the level of the state so that, because some of the money had strings attached. State funds don't have strings attached. Our state funding didn't have any legal, you know, legalese in there that said we had to mask the kids in order to get our own funding. The federal funding did.
Yep.
And if they commingled them, then.
That's all sorts of.
That's all sorts of problems. Right. Yeah. So we put that in our magical cover letter, being careful not to commit libel. We just put it in the form of a question, and all these school board members had to read it. It had to be, and all these parents had to read it. Is it possible that Chris Reichdell is committing extortion? Let's just think about it. Right? And so when, when Chris Reichdell, a couple, was it a week ago, started to come out on the news saying, yeah, you know, I mean, maybe not so much in alliance with Inslee on this. Maybe I do really agree with all these superintendents that it's time for us to take the masks off the kids. We started to see the first crack in the, in the system there where Inslee and Chris Reichdell were no longer in lockstep about their messaging. And then I didn't watch the whole thing because my video kept buffering, but Inslee's first presser on the masks, he kind of came out saying that he wasn't exactly happy with Chris either. So it was the first time we saw that these two were not in lockstep. And of course, we wanted to take credit for that and say, well, maybe that's because we've been calling them out for extortion across the whole state. Chris is now aware that the parents are aware. It's not just a few lawyers who are aware. It's not just a few activists who are aware. It's now a lot of parents.
Of the entire state, like.
The entire state is now saying, Chris.
The Beehive is like.
Is it possible that you're breaking the law here? Yeah, so what, so what's happened in the last few days is pretty exciting. Kettle Falls School District, that's north of Spokane, has decided to test the waters. And they, their school board voted to make masks optional, right? You can still wear a mask if you want to, but it's optional now. It's a choice. And Chris wrote them a letter and said, you better get back in line. You've got 15 days to comply, or I'll send you another nasty gram. Then you'll have some more days to comply. So I don't know how, I don't know what the window is. Does he have 30 days or 45 days? Does Kettle Falls have, they've got some time here, and I hope they hold the line. Because Chris hasn't actually been pushed to the point of withholding funds. If he does, then we can drop some more lawsuits.
I was going to say, let him withhold the funds. Like, let, let him reap the rewards of, I mean, just the public opinion of him.
Right.
And then, yeah, the, the actual legal, legal precedent that he just said.
There's going to be some major fallout. Then, you know, teachers probably might not get paychecks that week, you know? However, some of us are going to have to hurt, and I'm sure that Kettle Falls thought that through. So I had a conversation with a superintendent last week or the week before, and he said.
Of Kettle Falls?
No, of another district, and I, I won't, I won't share names at this point. But he said, we represent like half the state at this point. He says, I'm talking to other superintendents every day. And we are demanding of Inslee that he give us some metrics by when we can meet those metrics and get out from under this. Because they're never talking about this ending. There's no end game for this pandemic.
Well, there is, but another, another topic.
But see, that was a week or two ago. The narrative switched so fast. So they submitted a letter that they all signed, apparently, all these superintendents, and pushed Inslee and said, you need to give us some metrics by which this is going to end because we're done, right? And then apparently I just saw an article that came out yesterday. It said another 40 school districts and the, or 40 superintendents on the east side of the state basically did the same thing. We're done. So Inslee's response to that was to come out and say, we'll take the masks off. I'm not telling you when though. But they'll come off eventually, someday. It'll be weeks, not months. That's all he said. Then everybody else went berserk and said, I can't believe that you wouldn't even give us an end game. That's when Kettle Falls and then now Richland School District also voted to make masks optional. But then here's the point where I'm unclear on. It says, it said in the same article, it said, they've now shut their doors and they can't open because they're going to kind of decide how they're going to move forward. So they made masks optional and then they went into an emergency shutdown.
And we're not sure who authorized that shutdown, right?
We're not sure if they did that to themselves or if the state came and did that to them, and who has the authority to shut the doors of a school? I'm unclear. Yeah. So we're in a standoff right now. And apparently at 2 o'clock this afternoon, you know, which is, you know, less, less than two hours. So that was so much pressure, right, that Inslee said, okay, 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 I'll, I'll do another press conference. I will officially release a date by which the kids can take off their masks.
3047, on February 15th.
Why couldn't he give us the date last week? What's, what's happened between last week and this week? Why could, I personally, I think he gets off on dragging this out. I do.
I can see that.
You can see it when you look into his, his eyes, which you can barely see behind his glasses. Anyway, it's a conundrum.
Yes. So did we want to get into the RCW about WASDA? And what exactly WASDA is, why it's so damaging to the very essence of a republic?
Yep.
And what it would take to get rid of it?
Okay, so Keith, thanks for your patience on that while I went down that rabbit hole. Can you jump on 28A345, which you've got highlighted there? If you just click on that, you'll see that here's the whole chapter on, on WASDA. And only in Washington are school board members called school directors. So that's why this is a little confusing. It's like, well, who's the school director? Well, that's just a fancy name for a school board member. So the first section of the chapter there is how the association was created. And then the second one is called membership. So Keith, you can jump on that, click on that.
Keith, do you have the PMP pulled up?
Okay, so it's, it's just a very powerful one-sentence law. The membership of the School Directors Association shall comprise the members of the boards, the directors of the school districts. So that little word shall is all the power right there. It means must. Yeah, they have to. I say it's like if you're born into the Smith family, you're, you're born with the last name Smith. You have no choice, right? So what that basically means is, if you are a school board, you are also a member of WASDA.
Period.
Period. There's no way out.
That's the definition.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, seems a little benign. It's like, okay, what's the big deal? Okay, well, Keith, if you would go to 28A343100, it's in that third tab. Perfect. This is what I wanted y'all to see. This law has been monkeyed with recently, as you can see in the dates below. It says, beginning with the 2022 calendar year, each member of a board of directors shall complete a governance training program. So we see that word shall again. So they have to get trained. So previous members to this, we've, we've noticed this when we've talked about this at school boards, kind of a deer in the headlights look that we're getting from these older school board members, some of the presidents.
Because they didn't know about this.
Well, they, they didn't realize that they were now being compelled by law to do this governance training. And some of the newly elected school board members said they just got back from it. It was in Bellevue. It was held at a hotel. They said it was nauseating to sit through. Because why? Because if you go down to tab number two, it says, governance training programs completed by directors in accordance with subsection one of this section must be aligned with the cultural competency, diversity, equity, inclusion standards for school director governance. And then we could do a deep dive into this if we wanted to see how they defined that. But we're not going to, we're going to save that for another video.
You can do that yourself. The links are all right there. Like, it's hyperlink. You can go click it and, and read it yourself.
But here, we'll, we'll give you, yeah, we'll give you the translation. Cultural competency, diversity, equity and inclusion standards means CRT and expanded sex ed.
Right.
And what I like to, I just like to call that CRT, I like to call that the divide and conquer curriculum. It has absolutely nothing to do with racism. That's just a smokescreen for China coming in and trying to divide and conquer without shooting a bullet. Okay, so we'll save that for another video. Expanded sex ed, I like to call that sex ed to desanctify sex, turn sex into a toy for kindergartners, rather than.
Which, which is.
You know, the sacred act that it is.
It's, it's a, it's a certain level of pedophilia.
It's, it's setting this up to accept pedophilia as just another cultural norm, you know?
Yeah. And then I guess if the kids at five years old say that, that anal, I feel.
It's hard to even talk about.
That, that, that anal sex is normal. They realize that at five years old. So I guess if, if an older person wants to have anal sex with me when I'm still seven, that's okay because I learned about it when I was five, like.
Yeah, it's like, it's so hard to even talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the thing is, is that I had some new friends now who are board members who came back from that training and said it was, it was so sickening. It was so hard to sit through. They had the librarians pushing new books that they wanted the teachers to read that were about like Little Joey who decided he wanted to be a mermaid. So he goes to his teacher and says, I'd like to have breasts. And the teacher says, you know, your parents might have gotten it wrong when they said you were a boy. And let's teach you how to get breasts and no need to tell your parents, you know, like, I mean, it was just, it's sickening. I know. As a, as a father of two beautiful, beautiful children, I know this is hard to digest. This is, this is in our, this is in our, our governance training.
So, yeah.
Let's get back to.
And let's, let's recap. The school board members must be, they shall be, a member of WASDA, and they shall be trained according to what we just talked about.
Right.
By law.
By law.
In Washington state.
Yeah. Yep. So that's why we got a lot of deer in the headlights looks from our own school board members when we read them this. And say, hey, wake up. You are now compelled by law to do this. I had some older school presidents say, we, we've done some other governance training. We don't have to do WASDA. I said, when was the last time you looked at the law? Do now.
2022.
Yep.
As of 45 days ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So, so we had a champion. We had a superhero. His name is Joel McIntyre. He is a legislator for Washington. He was going to sponsor a bill to change that little word shall to may in the membership law. So it was going to be WASDA member, it was going to say the school boards may become members of WASDA. It's an option. If they're doing their job, you like what they're doing, you can be a member.
If you don't like it.
Right.
Just skip out.
So he attempted to sponsor that bill. Something happened behind closed doors. He got strong armed, strong armed. He, he decided not to do it. That was just recent. That was last week. So we're asking Washington citizens to jump on his website. His number is on there. The number will get to a legislative assistant. Now here's some training. Be nice, be an advocate, but hold him accountable. Be like, Joel, we heard you were gonna sponsor this bill to make WASDA membership optional.
We think that's a great idea.
It's a great idea. Yeah.
Please, we want you to do that.
Why didn't you do it? Hey, what happened? What, do you need some help? Do you need us to make some noise?
How can I help you?
How can I help you? Yeah. Do you want us to make some noise about it? Do you want us to get on social media? Do you want us to get some other parents involved? We're gonna talk about this. And here's the thing, I should've called Joel a long time ago. I should've told him, we put your name on a cover letter and talked about this bill you were gonna sponsor. It went out about 10,000 times across the state. 60 different school boards heard that you were going.
Have a lot more support than you think you do.
You had a lot of support, but guess what? They found out this week, he is no longer sponsoring that bill. Some, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna accuse him of anything, but he, um, he's not doing it anymore. Why? Did he chicken out? Sorry to be so direct, but I guess we gotta find a new sponsor for that bill. They're looking for a new sponsor. Okay. But see, here's the power we now have as Washington Parents Alliance. We are a large group of parents and we now represent a voter pool, right? And we can, we can, I, I've now got some inside tracks to some people who can tell me what's being proposed and sponsored in the legislature and I can let them know. Here's the thing, Joel doesn't know that we knew that he was gonna sponsor that bill. So if he, he decided not to do it, it's kinda like, well, he can go to sleep that night that he decided to chicken out.
He didn't know that anyone was watching him.
Yeah. He didn't know anybody was watching him. Well, we were watching him, you know? And so he needs to know we were watching him. So the next guy who sponsors it is gonna get a tremendous amount of support and accountability from us. Okay. So let's move on to the next guy. Oh, go ahead.
I, I do wanna mention this because we, we, we alluded to this, but I don't think we spelled it out explicitly.
Okay.
When we talked about, okay, here's the school boards, they're connected to WASDA and WASDA is forcing down all this stuff. The reaction, and by, by stuff means CRT and sex ed, the comprehensive sex ed and equity, inclusion, blah, that sort of stuff. The reaction that we've been seeing from parents, and this is what led to us being labeled as domestic terrorists, is to go to the school board and say, I don't like CRT. Get rid of C A T. I don't like the sex ed. Let me, let me read the book that you're trying to read, read to my children, like, like what you just described, that sort of thing. These are symptoms. The CRT, the sex ed, that stuff's symptoms. By approaching it this way, and of course, this, this is Washington specific and every state's got its own way that it's finagling it in there. But to approach it this way to say, okay, if we could just get that shall changed to may.
Go to the source of the problem.
Go to the source of the problem. If you could change that one word, now the school boards are disconnected from WASDA and then the school board members do have the power to go, no, we're not doing that.
Exactly. They would have choice. Everything about the scamdemic has been revealing to us where our choices were taken away and where we need to get them back.
And then all the CRT stuff, all the, all the sex ed, the, the equity inclusion, all that stuff can go down like dominoes.
Or we could rewrite the curriculum. We could be like, okay, maybe we want to inform our children about something that has to do with sexuality, but let's bring in a panel of parents to help us rewrite this curriculum. You know, I mean, there's just, I mean, and this is the thing, I gotta point this out. The left has always gotten a foothold into the minds of the public by mixing truth with lies. That's why CRT is so controversial, because everybody wants to abolish racism.
Right.
But there's a lot of lies that they pushed in that too. There's expanded sex ed. Should we have some different understanding than we did from the 1950s sexual curriculum or sex ed?
Maybe, sure.
Maybe, yeah. Maybe we should. But do kindergarteners?
Pedophilia.
It doesn't mean pedophilia. Yeah. They, you know? And so it's, it's always given to us in the mainstream media as a good idea. Because you take, because maybe 10% of it is a good idea if, you know, presented in a certain way.
Yeah.
So this is where parents are taking their power back.
Yeah. They put a little good idea and they write a big bad idea on top of it to get it in the door.
Right. Mix it up. Marble cake. Mix it all up.
Yep.
Yeah. Exactly. Okay. So the next guy we wanna talk about is Brad Clippert. And he is one of our Washington legislators. Yep. And Keith is gonna get a picture of him up here. And his legislative assistant's name is LJ. I think her, her real name is Luana, but she goes by LJ. There's Brad. Looks like a nice guy. He was gonna be our next champion. Okay? He was our next superhero. He was going to sponsor the bill to make parents the primary stakeholders in their children's future. Excuse me, resolution. Thanks for correcting me. Yeah. So this is something that you've had a lot of great interviews on about how the North Dakota legislator got that passed at the level of the legislation. So I hope your viewers go back and watch those episodes. Uh, you could probably put that in the show notes.
Absolutely. And then the city of Tenasket in Washington state.
Yep. The district, school district. And subsequently lots of adjacent districts have now gotten it passed.
Oh, that's great news.
I just talked to Jared Sessler, who is running for Congress down in the tri-cities. And he loves it so much. He's, he got the city council to pass it. You know? I mean, this is, this is a hot topic, right?
And let's, let's briefly talk about what it is. Cause if someone hasn't watched those interviews, like what are these, what are these people talking about?
Exactly. It's, it's acknowledging that, well, okay, let's, let's go back to the beginning. Our legislature says that, they use the word stakeholder. It's, it's a businessy term, right? But they define it as anyone who has a vested interest in the outcome.
Of something.
Of something, right? So our legislature says, when it comes to the terms of the entire public school system, which includes everything that they could have a legal hand in. Everything from preschools to homeschools to private schools, universities, homeschool curriculum, anything that they could figure out a way to license or give permission to do. Okay? They consider that the entire system.
Okay.
They legally have said that the legislature is the primary stakeholder in the outcome of the success of the system as a whole.
Which includes the children.
Yeah. They're the driver. Yeah. Yeah. But if you were to ask a parent, who is the primary stakeholder of the child? Of the child's future, of the child itself, which another way of saying is who is the final authority? Who has the greatest vested interest in the child? The parent would say, I do.
Right.
Right? I'm the parent. But the state is saying, ah, we might disagree with you on that.
Kinda like the article we just read at the beginning.
Right.
Yes.
Exactly. So what we don't know is for the last several decades, they've been weaving in language into RCWs and WACS and policies at the level of school boards that basically are painting parents out of the picture. And an overly simplified way of saying is, we share joint custody of our kids with the state. Especially if, if you put them in a public school system, you do. And private school parents got whiplash when they figured out that they're private schools.
Same thing.
Same thing. They were kowtowing to the state as well. They were just following suit. And many of them legally didn't have to and still chose to. So we were assisting with private schools as well, homeschool parents, everything. We're all in the same, we're all in this together. So it's, it's really important for parents to understand that we've been written out of the system, not just in theory, but lawfully. So Tenasket, and you can refer people in the show notes back to that other great episode of how Mark Herr and Pam Leslie and their crew did that. They got a resolution passed at the level of the school board that acknowledges parents as the primary stakeholder.
Correct.
Now resolutions don't have legal teeth, so they're easy to pass. But the way I describe them is they're like the mission statement that you described for a business.
And then I wanna add in terms of easy to pass, at the legislator level, or I guess at any government level, it doesn't require the sign off of the executive. So in North Dakota, and this, I did this in my interview with him, he pointed this out, is that when, when they pass the resolution, it doesn't go before the governor and he decides to veto it or not.
Right.
It's done. The resolution is done. That's it. So.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah.
So I wonder, I don't know. I wonder if like, how that, how, what makes it easy? What makes it easy for a school board to pass a resolution? What signature do they not need that makes it easy?
Well, um, I, I think we're getting.
We're getting into questions I can't answer.
We're getting into questions I can't answer. And there's an event coming up where you might actually learn about that.
Right. Let's plug that at the end for sure.
Structure of school government is very important to know in order to be able to answer that. But the point being, a res, because it has no teeth, both because the executive doesn't have to sign off on it, if, if that's part of the process, but also because it's not, we're not changing a rule. We're just saying, we, you know, we, we support this.
We support this idea.
Yeah.
We support this idea. But what that means then is Tenasket, after they pass this, that means they're gonna have to go through all their previously defined policies and regulations.
And address where it contradicts, right?
Where, where did we not adhere to this? And so the idea is let's get this passed at the level of the state legislature, but we're Washington, right?
We're not North Dakota. It's a little trickier.
Proving to be tricky. So let's get it first passed at the level of these local school boards. And then we put pressure on the legislature to acknowledge this. And what happened in Tenasket, I think it was like the day after they got it passed, OSPI called them and was like, how can we woo you back to our side?
Yeah. Because there's a, there's a battle between OSPI and WASDA.
There's a, yeah. That's why I describe OSPI and WASDA as two opposing mob bosses who are supposed to be working on the same team, but sometimes they're not. And they're both vying for control over these local school boards. And when, when Tenasket said, we acknowledge parents are the primary stakeholder with their own kids.
They became neutral.
They became neutral. They became free agents and OSPI and WASDA were like, oh, we gotta get these guys back under our wings. So it's, here's the, here's the thing that's so fun about this. I never thought I would enjoy 5D chess at the level of politics. You know, like I didn't know this was what I was gonna do or be. But it's fun because you get to see what goes on behind the curtain. And things that you don't realize are so powerful really are. So in our cover letter that we gave to, you know, the 61 districts, we said, we dropped the seed. You know, just like germinate on this. We want you to consider passing a resolution. Now, none of them jumped at that. They all were like.
Why would I need to do this?
Why would I need to do that? Yeah. So what we need to do is, is what, you know, what we've been trained to do. Find, find the in that you have with a conservative, more conservatively minded school board member or just a family oriented school board member. This crosses the aisles. This is Democrat, Republican, it doesn't matter. Parents are parents.
Unless you're an outright commie, Marxist, this crosses all the aisles. Yeah.
I don't know of anybody who has kids and says, let's hand them over to the state. Well, there are some parents like that. But, but most parents who would care enough to run for the school board would say, I did this because I really love my kids. I'm not intending to give authority over to the state to dictate, to take away my right as a parent. So this is the in that you can have. And we're asking more and more school districts to consider having town hall meetings, which is legally they can, rather than these closed school board meetings where we're not allowed to talk to each other. And we're actually having, starting to open up some conversation about this. However, let's get back to Brad. So Brad attempted to get this resolution passed at the level of the legislature. Apparently it was a little premature because, and this is where Keith can pull up. This is what I want people to look at. The website for the House Republicans, House Republican Caucus, right?
It's up there. HouseRepublicans.wa.gov-about.
Yeah. You go to the about page and you get to meet all the people. So if you go to the top, Keith, and just meet the leaders of the White House Republican, Washington House Republican Caucus. Okay? Let's scroll down and let's see who these major players are. Everybody needs to know the leader is JT Wilcox.
Our favorite man.
Yeah. Let's just say, does the, do we, he's acting like a rhino right now. Okay? Okay. Let's scroll down. Deputy Leader Joel Creutz. This guy could possibly be fallen into the rhino category. Yep. Okay. Now scroll all the way down to Jacqueline, keep going. Jacqueline Maycumber, same thing. Okay? The reason why we have to point these guys out is because the attorney for these folks for the, for the Republican Caucus, he shot down the parents' primary stakeholder resolution.
From Brad Clippert.
From Brad Clippert. He said, I think he attempted to rewrite it. He said, you can't, you can't do this. This is our apparent conservative Republican.
These are the people who are supposed to be on our side, standing for our values.
On our side, you know, on the side of family values. Well, they're not. He said, we can't do this. Why? Because it flies in the face of current Washington law.
Yes, that's the point.
Yeah.
Right? That's why we wanna do it.
Yeah.[1509.24] He said, "We can't, you can't do this because we'd have to rewrite a whole bunch of Washington law that basically says parents are not the primary stakeholder."
Yes, that's what we want, and that's what we want you to want.
So I want you to understand that, that that's why we need you to see that that article that we brought up from that columnist in California, it's not off-base from what the legislature actually believes about parents.
And, and it's not, like, this isn't a new idea, like, I brought up Plato. He had Plato in there, where in Plato's Republic, part, part of the idea was, you separate the children from, from the parents to the point where you have wives in common, so nobody knows who, who the father is anyway, and then you separate it from the mother as soon as, I don't know, as soon as it's born, but as soon as you're able to separate it from the mother.
After its wings.
Yeah, and then nobody knows who's the parent, nobody knows who's the, the child. And he brought that up specifically in that article. This isn't a new idea. It's not coming out of nowhere, and it's, it's not a myth.
It's horrifying.
Yeah.
It's horrifying. So that's a little example of the sort of education that Washington Parents Alliance will be doing going forward. Helping these parents understand what's at stake here, and then what they can do about it. And I recently spoke at a church in Bothell. We had a very beautiful discussion. It was emotional. You know, it's one parent to a bunch of other parents in the room just saying, "You guys, look, look how they're trying to, to separate us from our children through law." And they're doing it on the slide, they're doing it under our noses. I mean, we could know what's going on, but we're not taking enough interest. We have to take responsibility for the fact that we have been checked out. We have been too enthralled with the trappings of, you know, pay the mortgage and buy the next Xbox and whatever.
Watch the Super Bowl.
Watch the Super Bowl.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly. To care and be careful about your apathy. So we had a very sobering discussion, but then the, you know, the hosts of that group got up and they said, "This has been fantastic, because we aren't just here complaining, we're talking about what we can do about it." And it's not just call your legislator. It's call your legislator at a certain time, and it's not just one person now, it's thousands of people.
And it's identify what exactly is the problem, and it's one word.
Right.
I mean, not that that's the only problem that can be identified here, but for what we're talking about, like, laser focus, if we could change that one word and that one law, all these issues that we're up in arms about can be addressed much differently and much easier.
And we can actually hold these legislators accountable.
Because we want this word. Whatever the heck, whatever the heck you're doing, that word right there.
And now we can, now we can use the power of social media.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, Joel, you didn't know that we knew, but we know, so we're gonna splash your name all over social media so everybody knows you're our superhero. Please go get the job done, and if you don't get the job done...
Someone else gets the credit.
Yep, someone else gets the credit. So something that the Washington Parents Alliance is doing to break through this Berlin Wall of mainstream media censorship, the teachers' union. The day that Governor Inslee came out with his presser last week and said, "We'll take the masks off someday, I'm not gonna tell you when." Okay? The teachers' union sent a letter to all the teachers, and it looked like it had been pre-written. I mean, there's, it, it hit their inbox so fast that it's like, there's no way they even had time to write it. So they knew what Governor Inslee was gonna say. Their response was, as expected, "Be scared. It looks like Inslee doesn't care about you. You're gonna wanna keep that N95 mask on." You know, it was more fear porn.
More fear porn about COVID, COVID, COVID.
More fear porn about COVID.
The KN95 mask, which is not an N95 mask, and they literally, it's, I mean, I don't know this for fact, I just assumed this as soon as I saw the name. It says KN95, so you think it's like an N95, but it's not.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't, I don't know, but they definitely pushed it. They definitely, the teachers' union stance was, "Teachers, be scared. We wanna keep our children masked. That's the only way you'll be safe." And, and so I'm like, oh, more propaganda. So the Washington Parents Alliance did something pretty fantastic. We said, "We've got, we've got the email addresses of all the teachers, because if you're a parent, you jump on your school's..."
It's all there.
It's, yeah, your school's website. There's the email addresses for all, and you're probably already in communication with your kid's teacher. So I asked the parents, I said, "We're gonna write up a letter with the true data on masks and the data on how kids are being hurt by masks, and not swayed in one direction or the other, but the true data. And why don't you email that to every parent in every district?" My parents jumped up and down. They're like, "Yeah, because it's coming from a parent, it's sincere, it's not jumping up and down as a ma, as a mad mob."
Here's the data.
Here's, here's the data. We're, we're really concerned. Would you please, would you please see that you've been forced to wear something that isn't helping?
And it's actually hurting.
It's actually hurting, and we know you're tired of telling the kids to put the mask up over their nose. You know about the, all the teachers who've been taping it to the kids' noses. So I just mentioned that we should do this, and a medical researcher and writer, who is a parent in our group, you know, raised her hand and said, "I'd like to help you with that." Just this morning, I got the, the final draft for this letter. It is, it's a work of art, because it's so neutral. She did such a good job of pulling all the data and sharing...
Presenting it scientifically.
Presenting it scientifically in a way where you're like, it, it's, it's not, um, it is showing that in some cases masks were helping, but by such a tiny percentage that it was just negligible. It like, just didn't make any sense at all.
Well, and then something to be said, when, when the percentage is negligible, it could be error.
Right, right.
You could be within the realm of error there.
It's a six-page letter of data. I mean, she's just, it's, she's done such a beautiful job of this. And so we're gonna send that out the end of the week, and we're, I guess this is the end of the week. But it's, it's such a fantastic way for Washington Parents Alliance to counter the censorship, the lack of good data that the left is putting out. And to show, hey, we can do this in a way that's neutral, to bring, you know, real journalism and real reporting back. We're just gonna have to do it ourselves if the media's not gonna do it. Right, exactly.
That's what, that's what this is here for.
Yeah.
So, what are the next steps?
Well, I think, you know, we've been like this grassroots guerrilla organization. We refused to do anything where the state could find us. We didn't register as a nonprofit. We kept everything very low-key. It was amazing that I got 10,000 parents to not talk about this on social media. And we went old-school, right? We just said, and we grew to such a large group of people through word of mouth and what I call the magical potluck, you know, the potluck party, just invite people over to your homes. We had people do watch parties of your videos, you know, to help get, to understand what this Parents' Primary Stakeholder Resolution was all about. Um, and so we, people just gathered, you know, in this old-school way, and talked and hugged and felt like they weren't the only parent in their district who cared about this. And you know where it was so beautiful, was deep inside King County.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we served...
King County being Seattle, for anybody who's out of state.
Yep. Huge groups of people, Seattle, Auburn, Kent, Federal Way, Vashon Island. There was a huge group on Vashon Island. And this just crossed all walks of life. Like, I thought it was fun that I would go out and talk to groups that were held in churches out in, you know, rural, rural Washington. On Vashon Island, we met in an art studio, you know, like, we were, and in some places, we would meet in real estate offices, gymnasiums, anywhere where people could host a gathering and not have to pay out the nose for rent. Patriots would just offer their offices, their homes, their, wherever for us to meet and talk and, you know, share food and teach each other how to do this. So we're bringing back community and holding each other accountable to, um, holding on to our kids and not letting go.
That's awesome.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's awesome. So specifically, is there, is there any, you know, here's the plan to go after that one word? You got anything like that, and if you do, do you want to talk about it?
Um, what's next is, we, we've gotta watch his press conference, which here is gonna happen in 50 minutes.
Man, if, if we did it a little later, we could've just pulled it up live.
And we'll find out what he has to say about when the masks come off the kids. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna take the foot off the gas. We've still got another... Yeah, we, we have another legal action to pull off. I don't wanna tell, say too much about that, but it is going to be directed at the state and the county specifically.
Counties or county?
Counties, and the, the, the people who didn't do their job, who should've been prosecuting, should've been arresting, but didn't. Okay, so we've got one more legal action to pull off. And then Washington Parents Alliance is going to focus primarily on what's next, which is the, the education we need to get to understand more about how to play the 5D chess game. So that's where you could plug your class for Center for Self-Governance.
I can plug the class, and before I plug the class, there is something I wanted to say about letting off the gas or not.
Right.
And it's something you mentioned earlier about Chris Rectum, saying, you know, "It's time to take the masks off the kids." I don't know if you've noticed, the entire world, or entire Western world has been saying that phrase.
Yeah.
"It's time to end the COVID restrictions. It's time to end the mask mandates. It's time to get over..." It's coordinated. Give me a break.
Of course it is.
It's totally coordinated, and I, I'm not gonna sit here and say I know exactly what their strategy is, but I have a sneaking suspicion. It's push-pull. Let me, let me push the pressure on. You're upset, you're upset, you say, "Okay, I'll take it away." And then we go, "Oh, we're free again! Hooray, we can party, we go, we go to the bar without the mask, whatever, everything's okay." And then whatever, you know, when, when they made this push, they changed some rules, they pulled it back, and now those rules stay changed.
Right.
So when they pull back, press the gas even harder.
Even harder.
The gas needs to be pressed even harder. And so now going back to the plug, that's, that's very important here, is IREDA TV is gonna be hosting an event in North Bend.
Right.
March 27th, which is a Sunday, it's gonna be all day, starting at 9:30, going until wherever, whenever we end, because these trainings change time depending on how much everybody participates.
Yeah, how many questions are asked.
And so the, the event that we're hosting is gonna be the Center for Self-Governance. And we're gonna be having two separate trainings. One is the Structure of School Government in Washington State. So that whole thing that we went over on, on the screen here of, okay, here's, here's how you dial in and figure out this is exactly how these things are being controlled, and here's the pinpoint of where the problem is. It's gonna be a training on all of that, and how to identify that sort of stuff. The second training, and there'll be lunch. It's gonna be catered on-site.
Beautiful catered lunch, very healthy.
Oh, yeah, I, I should say, North Fork Farms. Uh, it's, it's a wedding venue right underneath Mount Si. You're, you're just gonna stand there.
It's breathtakingly beautiful.
You, you might actually be too distracted to pay attention to the training, because you're gonna be too busy looking at the mountain.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
And, and so, yeah, there's gonna be coffee on-site, I mean, it will be coffee. Food on-site and a professional barista on-site, so it's, it's gonna be half-party and half-training. It's gonna be awesome.
That's, that's how we do it. That's how patriots roll.
And so the, the, the second event, or the second training is the big one, which is Introduction to Systematic Politics.
Right.
Or a better way to put it would be Introduction to Political Leadership. And the, some of the strategies that you were talking about. For example, we, we, we talked about introducing these resolutions as a pri, you know, who's the primary stakeholder here, and what happens if, if that resolution is passed? Or what is the exact word, and how do you put the pressure the right way on the legislators to, to, to make them change that word? Because they don't know that anyone's paying attention, and they got this person pulling, all that sort of stuff. How do you learn how to play that chess game?
Exactly.
To identify what the issue is and say, "Okay, here's how we move these pieces to get the, to fix those issues", instead of just going, "I'm gonna yell at my school board members. I'm gonna call my legislature. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna speak at the, the local Republican Party," or whatever, you know? And I'm not saying that any of those individual things are bad.
They're just ineffective.
And they're uncoordinated. Like, if you put it in a, in a, in a chess strategy, you say, "Okay, if I, we make this speech over here, and then we call this person over there, and we do this," and, and you say, "Okay, bam, 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 I, I got all these pieces together, and having brought them together, we did the thing that we wanted."
It's the chess game.
It's the chess game, yes.
What I, what I tell my parents is, it's time for us to become smarter than the school board members, and it's not, it's not hard to do.
Yes.
I'll give you an example of, of, of something that happened yesterday.
Real quick, so, and then finishing the plug. CenterforSelfGovernance.com is where you can sign up for the classes. There are two links to sign up for. The, the classes are separate. Put them both in your cart, and then go to checkout, and the checkout is actually at the bottom of the page. I know everybody likes to look at the top right corner of the page.
It's at the bottom of the page.
Checkout's at the bottom. Check them both out. You can register on-site if you just wanna show up and register, but it's better if you registered before, so we know how many people show up for food.
Yeah, because I think we've got a capacity of 100 people. It's gonna fill up fast, so I suggest everybody register fast. And it's, it's not expensive either. I mean, it's...
It's $25 for the first class.
Nothing.
It's $50 for the second class. And then food is gonna be somewhere between $20 and $30. Bring $30 cash just in case, and then there will be coffee as well. And we gotta pay for the coffee, because it's professional barista, so have some cash for food and coffee. And...
But you'll pay for the class ahead of time.
Pay for the class ahead of time, please. And, and if, if for some reason you don't, or you have someone who wants to jump in the car on the last minute, you can register on-site. It's just, we need to know for food and coffee how many people are showing up.
The cost of these classes is a petence compared, miniscule compared to how much, how value there is in this. And if I could just ask every one of my parents to attend this class, we've, um, we've had Mark with the Center for Self-Governance do some of these customized trainings for us along the way. And this is how we've accomplished what we've done, is through his, his guidance. But if you can't come to North Fork Farms, you can host, just like you have hosted.
They will come. It's easy to host one of these events.
So I'd love to see, I know Jared Sessler might, um, out in Tri-Cities, might help host one. I would love it if my, my coordinators out in Spokane would host one. We can do it over Zoom. But we need to learn how...
The game is played.
The game is played, and when you're not the only one who's playing it, but you've got 50 other parents in your district who are playing it with you, the power comes back to the people.
And it's a lot of power. What, what, I, I won't get into it specifically. You're, you will be sitting there or standing up, and it will be, your hair will be blown back.
Yeah.
Like, whatever you think it's gonna be about, I, I thought I knew a lot of stuff walking into this training. I didn't know, I didn't know anything.
Yes, it's humbling.
It was awesome, so.
And, and speaking of humbling, I think that's why I love CSG so much, is because the people who've organized it are ridiculously humble.
Yeah.
I mean, they are extraordinarily powerful in what they have been able to teach people, and yet they're not a household name, and they should be. You know, and you couldn't, you couldn't give Mark and Pam, and you couldn't, you could just ladle credit on them, and their, their heads are still not gonna get that big, you know? They're just humble. So I appreciate this, guys. I love them so much.
So that's the plug. Oh, and, and you can go to IREDA TV. There'll be a link there on the top of the page. If, if you get lost trying to go for the Center for Self-Governance, that will take you straight to the pages where you need to sign up. So that's the plug.
So that's, yeah, that's next step, is let's learn school government, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pound the pavement all summer long teaching this so that we are prepared to head into the 2022 school year knowing what we're doing. Yeah, absolutely. So we're not gonna let these vaccine, we're not even gonna let conversation of vaccine mandates happen.
Yeah.
And I, and the last thing I want to say to get everybody to calm down about the vaccines. I don't care what the Department of Health says. I don't, I don't care what OSPI says. If it's not law, it doesn't stand.
Done.
And, and so, you know, they can, they can take votes till the cows come home. I don't care. If, if it's not law, it doesn't matter to our children.
Mm-hmm. That's an, that's an excellent point. Was there any last thing you wanted to?
Well, if, if parents want to become part of our community in their district and meet the district coordinator, we have 102 parents stepping up to coordinate districts right now. We generally have one to two coordinators per district. If you wanna meet the person who's coordinating in your district, you can jump on our website. It's a really low-key website, because we didn't want it to be flashy.
Actually, pull up the website, Keith.
It is, uh, it's WAPA dot group.
Can you pull that up, Keith?
And so I don't want you to call it WAPA. I want you to call it Huapa, like that. Yeah, there it is, WAPA dot group. Um, it's real humble. It's just, it's just that page. You put your, your name, your home address, and your school district in there. The only reason we ask for your home address is we're not gonna send you anything, but you, if you do participate in any of our legal actions, we can put your address on the paperwork. Put your district in there, and then if you wanna actually be a coordinator for your district, put that in the notes and say, "Hey, Erin, I wanna be a coordinator. I wanna help." And this is gonna come straight to myself or another mom who's helping to organize this. And, um, that's it. That's how you get connected to us. Then you're part of the super-secret organization of Parents on Fire, yeah.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, well, that, this was...
That's it.
This was a spectacular conversation, as I said in the beginning.
Thank you for the part that you played, because most people don't know outside of this that you helped put together some great videos that helped launch this, so that we could get this information out to more people, but we kept all of those super-secret with passwords protected, so that no one would put them on social media. So we appreciate the part that you played.
Absolutely. That's, that's what we're here for. So thank you again for coming, and then, um, guy...
It's hard to see ourselves on the monitor.
You guys can't see, I got the monitor here, and Keith had me pulled up on my own monitor. So I meant to look at the camera, but I'm just staring at myself. Okay, I'm gonna focus on the camera. It's gotta turn off. So this has been Dylan Moore with IREDA TV. You could find us at ireda.tv, and any social media of your choice. No longer YouTube, we've been kicked off of YouTube.
Oh, good job.
Thank you. We are in the cool kids club, so no more YouTube, but you could find us on Rumble and BitChute and GabTV and Odyssey and Telegram and all that sort of stuff. Go to ireda.tv. At the top of the page, there will be links, dropdown menus, where you can go find us wherever you like, and please follow us there. So again, this has been Dylan Moore with IREDA TV. We got Erin with WAPA, and thank you for watching, and we'll see you next time.